All right, say it through you all. Call the meeting in order and stand for the pledge, please.
I'd like to put it just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, where there is justice.
Thank you. Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. I see no one in the audience. So we'll move on to number four, which is approval of the agenda. I do have addition to the agenda for an executive session. Or Stacy will tell us what the state code is here.
One twenty-five, SDCL one twenty-five two four for contract negotiations.
Any other additions to the agenda? Hearing none is our motion to approve the agenda.
So, motion.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item five is consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of the human services report, and approval of sick leave bank report. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Hi.
Porzma?
Hi.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six, routine business. Item A is approval of the claims. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments on the claims? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Porzma?
Hi.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is department head reports. We're gonna start with Brian with the highway report.
Good morning. Little bit of change on the Deer Creek Station Bridge. As of Wednesday, when I made this report and submitted that Stacy, the contractor, had not been out there, but now Bo's Construction is out there doing the regrade on the Deer Creek Station Bridge. Went and checked up on it yesterday. They're getting close to being done. And then all we have to do is wait for the guardrail installation and the asphalting to open that bridge back up. We're waiting on some testing that needs to come back from graves as far as their grout. So that may put a delay in it, but we need to wait until their twenty-eight day break of their concrete cylinder on that. They may have to redo the grout, but we'll see. So that's the update on that bridge. July twenty-third, met with Brad Warner, or Wurmers from Banner Engineering to talk about our various projects throughout the county that need to be finished in 2019. July twenty-third also, I received a letter from the DOT showing they approved our changes that we made to our county road plan with our eighteen fifty-one resolution back on May seventh. That is signed and confirmed. It's a little farther back in my report here. July twenty-fourth, met with Stacy and Vicki to review the five-year plan. Twenty-sixth, received a letter to DOT regarding the adverse weather potential delays. You guys can see my letter attached here, and I know that we are facing that with our bridges south on seventy-seven. There again, they're waiting until the flood stage goes down on those bridges, so there's been no work being conducted. So a little update on those also, but just wanted to bring that up. The DOT is seeing it throughout the state.
A quick question on that.
Yep.
You know, we've not been in this type of process before, and we were hoping to get it done by harvest or by, you know, fall and stuff like that. Can they do work during the winter on some of that stuff?
Yes, yes, they can.
They can continue?
They're just gonna have to change up their processes a little bit. They'd have to essentially heat wherever they're gonna pour with ground thawing machines in order to maintain the proper temperatures for the concrete to cure properly.
Okay. And then do we have to look in? Because I think we had a date that they needed to be done and any kind of?
Well, we have a date currently set at November one, but with the weather delays they've faced, we're gonna, I'm gonna work with the DOT once we start getting closer to get you guys a timeline. I'm guessing it's gonna go into winter, but I've also been told by the contractor, once they can get in here, they're gonna commit more crew power towards it because of these other projects they've been working on throughout the summer. That opens up their availability to come in and work on our bridges.
So do we need to extend our dates, or does that the DOT that handles?
That's the DOT that handles that, but at this point in time, we're quite a ways off. So at this point in time, we aren't gonna change anything.
See what happens.
And see what happens, but just to inform you guys that they have not been working on them, and I've been making sure you guys are well aware of that. It's, I know it's, it's been a arduous process on our end too because of the delays and the phone calls that we're getting.
Right, and I'm not feeling like we should put pressure on there. It's out of their control.
Yeah.
It's mother nature, anything like that. We do what we gotta do. Do you anticipate any extra funds that we would need to?
Not at this point.
Okay.
But it could face, you know, in the future. At this point in time, any overages, we would be responsible for, but as the current contract sits, there's not been any change orders.
Okay.
Is there anything we need to be looking at as relates to traffic for the harvest season?
And we've been thinking about that too. I've been talking with the DOT on that also, Leanne. The biggest thing is making sure our signs are maintained at this point in time, because the bridges are essentially, the one is out and the other one is not usable at this point. So as far as getting anything temporary is kinda out of the question, but making sure that we maintain the signage, and I've been working with the DOT on that also, because there's been now construction on three twenty-four, which ties into part of our detour. So it gets a little confusing when you get south of town there, and I know we've gotten some complaints on that too now that that three twenty-four construction started too because of over width loads essentially, and then the construction on the interstate.
With the extreme weather conditions, well, November first rolls around. Will they be in penalty then?
Not according to what the weather delays, and I think this is the intent of sending out this letter also is to take that into consideration. So July twenty-ninth, I spoke with DOT officials and Banner in regards to our current five-year plan. You'll see my recommendations come out later here in the meeting. We're gonna make a change to our current five-year plan. There again, it's not saying we're gonna get these grants, but at least we can apply for them, and they've extended that deadline. You'll see, I've added six bridges to our current five-year plan in order to apply for the preliminary engineering grants, and those will be reviewed on eight twenty-nine by the DOT board. And the reason for the adjustment this year is because there's been change in the DOT board staff. There's two new commissioners, and they wanted to get them all up to date. So the reason for us making these changes is there's money available. They feel on the account of all these other projects now that these counties are facing with bridges that have, you know, became inoperable due to the weather events, and I feel we have a very good chance of going after some of this money to try to get ahead. So when we do get down the road and if there would be money available, we've got some projects kinda set in line. Just, that's the reason for the changes, and I can address them too when we get to those, making those resolutions. So July thirty-first, Brookings County Road two oh seventh was closed between County Road seven, the Bruce Road, and County Road nine, and we reopened it late that afternoon when we finished up the next day. We've replaced one of the culverts that have been laying in the ditch here for about two years. Kind of a big project. The old culvert was a concrete culvert, and it had separated enough that the road was starting to cave through it. That was the reason for the replacement. So we're gonna, going to, we wanted to get them done now so they got a little time to settle, so we can get some blacktop put back on them to, you know, make them a little safer. I didn't want them sitting through the winter with gravel. And we did the same on seventy-seven. That one went a little tougher. We faced the east side of the box culvert was in really good shape, and the west side was the part that was crumbling. So that road, you'll see in my report here, that road was intended to be open last night, but it will be open today as we put the finishing touches on it. But those are the reasons for those two closures is the culvert failures. That the pipes have been sitting there, just haven't been installed due to the weather. We got a nice break in the weather, so that's well welcomed. And then July thirty-first, I reviewed all the township funding requests. We, I think we got one as all, and then some amendments to the previous ones, so we'll be talking about that here at the next meeting also. That's all I have.
Any questions, Commissioner?
The, with the rain that we've been having, what's the water situation at the shop?
The water situation at the shop's been pretty good. Other than, I don't think we, you guys flooded out your deal since last month, have you, Marty? The city is intending on doing some work in order to help us with that drainage. I've been working with city officials to try to help us with that drainage, Leanne. On the north side of the railroad tracks following to the west, it's plugged up and that backs up onto us. So we've been working with them in order to try to get that done, to get a little relief for not only Marty and Misty, but even Beta coming in and out of there through water. It's, when we get a rain, it don't take much, and it's backed up onto our driveway and into Marty's compound facility there. But work's being done, just, it's tough this year with trying to get in there and do that work also, and I kinda understand that too. It's wet, really wet, and we finally have got a little time to dry out.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Marty?
In that building, I have, I got everything built up on pallets and, and it never gets over the wheel wells completely on the, I got the UTV and the trailer in there, but it's, it's waterproof now to a certain degree if you wanna, I got things that I put on pallets. Anyway, just, I don't have a lot today that continue to have complaints east, or excuse me, west of town with the eighty-one closure, have complaints of traffic and speeding and that type of stuff. We've been working the Sinai Road with, for speed, and it has been speedy. So we've wrote several tickets in that area and so forth, and townships are getting upset because a lot of traffic on their roads, you know? People that live in the area and know the roads, they know where they can go to bypass and stuff, so a lot of the residents are not used to traffic, have traffic, and it's pretty typical, but we're trying to work through that. Other than that, I'm full at the jail. I want to remind you that anytime I'm over thirty-one, I'm at capacity. I have forty-one in there. I only have room for eight females, and I have nine. I'm gonna send one to another facility. The person is at the doctor right now having an exam, and I'm gonna send her to another facility, and then I possibly will send a male to another facility, to Falk County, later in the week. Twenty-four seven continues to stay busy. I have a hundred and forty participants, and so we still have a lot of traffic through the control area. And other than that, I don't have anything else.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Marty, on the forty-one that you've got, do you know how many are pre-trial detention?
Not right off the top of my head, no. I have some pre-trial, they're, one's moving on to a hundred and fourteen days pre-trial, and that's my problem is sentencing pre-trial. I'm not able to class, I'm unable, the lack of room, you know, so, you know, so far we're making it, but I just wanna, it's gonna cost us some money to ship people out, because that's just the way it's gotta be. But my issue is classification, pre-trial and trial. I got most of my sentenced low-grade felonies upstairs in the work release. You remember what the work release is, that's just an open area. So I have sixteen up there that are together all day long. It creates issues for me.
Commissioner Pierce, to answer your question, I would say of the forty-one, there's about fifteen that are pre-trial.
And particularly the ones that have medical issues? In the past, those bonds have been reviewed to determine whether or not those people are either a flight risk or a danger to the community. If they're not, maybe another issue could be looked at because of the cost of the county and to follow the state statute on bonding.
Yeah, I think Marty would agree with this. Our judges are real good about keeping the ones in that are a danger, and the ones that aren't are not in jail, so.
I have to agree that most, the ones that are there need to be there.
Yeah.
We, we're utilizing what we can. The courts are really good with this. I mean, if I have a medical issue and it's a low-grade felony, I can put a bracelet on, so, and he's not a threat to society, but the ones that are in there need to be in there. But I assure you, Leanne, that if there's somebody that can be out in the public, we work, work with the courts to.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the sheriff? If not, thank you, Marty.
Yep.
Vicki?
To give you an update from the finance office, we've been meeting Stacy and I on budgets and getting the final provisional budget ready, and also been working with some cities and schools as they are getting their levy requests ready, so they needed some information that we can give them. And next week, I'm sending three from my office to SEDASIS in Oacoma, which is a software users meeting, so they'll be gone one day next week. And other than that, just business as usual unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Vicki. Misty?
I don't have anything today.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Misty? Saying none, Mr. Hill.
Good morning.
Morning.
The, we started the emergency management briefings. I went to White yesterday evening at seven o'clock, and then from there, I drove over, did not break the speed limit and made it to Elkton in time for a briefing during nerves. And what that emergency management briefing is, I have to do each one of our communities once a year to meet our state and local agreement with the federal grant from the state of South Dakota. And I'll be doing the county commission, we'll get one, all elected officials have the opportunity of getting the briefing, and I'll give the county commission our briefing after we, we've got a new state and local agreement that we're gonna look at August twentieth, and at that time is when we'll, we'll go over the emergency manager briefing for this board. We had an emergency management meeting for Region Six in Metro on July twenty-fifth. We got a planning meeting scheduled tonight, starts at eight o'clock in this room. I've got emergency management briefing scheduled for August twelfth, one in Aurora, and also on August twelfth in Sinai. And then August the thirteenth, I go up to Bruce. We got a local emergency planning committee meeting scheduled for August fifteenth. Then I go to, August nineteenth, I go to Volga for emergency management briefing. August twenty-one, there's a tri-state emergency management meeting in Sioux Falls. August twenty-seventh, there's a pipeline safety meeting in Sioux Falls. September nineteenth, we have our yearly full-scale exercise. We're looking at going, probably taking our emergency management operations to Aurora, setting up the trailer, generators, make sure we can operate away from the city of Brookings, self-contained. Then on October fifteenth, we have another full-scale exercise. This will be fiscal year twenty-twenty's exercise. We're gonna piggyback on the points of dispensing flu shot exercise over at South Dakota State University and knock out that full-scale exercise at the same time, and that'll be the fiscal year twenty-twenty's requirement. There's an iPOS test on August the seventh. That's, it'll be one twenty PM, that's tomorrow. And what iPOS is, of course, is the emergency broadcast system, and we're gonna do a nationwide test, hopefully it'll come over all of our cell phones, and we'll be able to, they only do these once a year. The test date is August the seventh, the backup date in case there's severe weather is August the twenty-first, and this is just one way that they're, that they're testing the system out. We do have iPOS. Our iPOS is due for renewal this month. At NACO, there were some new demonstrations on iPOS having, such as on the cell phones and things like that. I checked off our particular vendor, we do not have the capability of having it on a cellphone at this time, the mobile device. You can have it on an iPad or laptop computer, they said. So if you wanna do it from a remote area, you gotta go to a larger computer. They're coming next month, or actually later, probably later this month, to show us what, some of the tricks of iPOS is. So we'll, when we get that there, I'll let the commission, commissioners know when the iPOS people's in town, and if you wanna come and talk to them, you'd be more than welcome to come and talk to the vendor itself to show, they're gonna show us some of the tricks, because I contacted them and asked them about the mobile. Some of them are getting mobile, and also to be aware, there's a new iPOS two-point-oh being released, supposed to be a super iPOS, and, but there's gonna be an additional funding with that particular one that we did not look at for the fiscal year twenty-twenty budget, so we'll see. When they're here, they're gonna talk a little bit about all that to us. During my emergency management briefing in White, and we will go on that in a minute, the US eighty-one grade rise, they have not contacted my office at all. You know, in two thousand and eleven, I believe it was, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we, we worked a few, with the Department of Transportation at the state level, and we allowed them to lower Twin Lakes down a little bit into Sinai to get the road fixed. So I have no idea what their plans are on US eighty-one at this time, or, except for what I've read in the newspapers, same as you have. They are gonna raise the grade on US eighty-one approximately two feet. So whether or not that's gonna fix their problem or not, I guess that'll be up for the engineers to figure out in the future. That's all I've got for my emergency management development staff report. Is it all right if I move into the census real fast?
Certainly may. That's item C on our agenda is an update on the census.
We have been working towards the twenty-twenty census since the twenty-ten census, which my office participated in back in twenty-ten. And last night, I did my first two emergency manager briefings, and after I do my emergency manager briefing, obviously I'm the county development director, so I went ahead and I discussed census with both communities, and I explained to them the importance that everyone needs to be counted in their community, that, you know, so that's the starting point. I did tell them that as we get closer to December and possibly January next year, we're gonna be contacting them, hopefully to put up maybe a flyer in their municipal, what kind of bill, whatever utility bill they got going out, that we'll be more than happy to work with them and put something in there, and we'll help them as much as we can with the census, you know, possible. I prepared a staff report that was put on in the packet. We, at this time, we do have, I've got five hundred dollars for two thousand and nineteen budget that we still haven't spent yet, but we will, as we ramp up towards December, we're gonna use that mainly for advertising. And I do have a request in for the twenty-twenty budget, which we'll see in next month on how much we get on that. That money obviously will be spent towards assisting our small towns and the whole county in the census twenty-twenty. The, every March since two thousand and ten, the Census Bureau does, they send us a request to update the maps in the community, and a GIS coordinator, Mr. Sampson now, we had ones previous to him, they work on any city limits updates and road layers in the county, and what the census do is they're in the process now hiring local people, and when the census comes, we'll have an opportunity to, the citizens of Brookings County, we have the opportunity to log on a computer, type in their information, send it in, and their name will be taken off the list for census people to visit. If you don't sign up and do the paperwork and either online or in writing, then the US Census Bureau sends someone to your house, they knock on the door, and they count everyone inside your house. So the way, if you don't want anyone, and I don't keep my house clean by any stretch, if you've ever seen my office, you probably don't know what my house looks like. I don't want the Census Bureau in my house, so I'm gonna fill out my stuff online and get it out of the way. What I would like to do in my office is probably work with the IT people, but see if we can't get a computer set up on my counter. I got a counter and got a corner in my office. Possibly set a computer up there and let the citizens, if they don't have a computer at home, if they don't wanna go to the library, they can come in over in the corner, use a computer to sign up for the Census Bureau. Does the commission have any big problem with that? It would be a standalone computer only for the census, no one else would do anything. We wouldn't allow them to bring in external devices or anything. It would be strictly, strictly for a citizen. If they wanna sign up for the census, let them sign up for the census, and, you know, we won't look at what they're doing, we don't care what they do. It'd be set up, almost like when you, when you travel and you wanna get, print off your boarding pass for an airplane, the computer's set up just for that.
Have you talked with Sean on this and that kinda stuff to?
I haven't yet. This is one of my brilliant ideals, when I sleep at night, I, when I sleep at night, I think of a lot of different things, and this was one of them that came up.
Okay. Well, obviously, I think Sean probably needs to be in the front line of that too.
By all means. And we have to have it set up firewall, so we don't want anybody bringing a stick in and hacking us.
And they get into, yeah.
We, yeah, we're fully aware of that one, so.
We may also wanna coordinate with the city's census committee to make sure that if there's one access site, they're aware of it. If there needs to be additional sites that they wanna participate with, with the library or somewhere else, we do that university. I could see probably having several of those in the community that would be set up that would be advantageous to getting a total count, especially with the college students. We need to have them counted, so we might wanna expand that midnight thought that you had to cover some more areas.
What we've got, we've got an emergency, I mean, we got a planning conference in October in Brookings, and we are looking at possibly bringing in a US Census Bureau representative from the US Census Bureau, and at that time is probably when we'd sit down with them. You know, this isn't something that we have to do right now. This is something we'd look in April next year. we'd, we'd look in April next year, so we got a little bit of time to prepare for it. The, yeah, and the US Census Bureau has been in contact with us. We, we talked to the Census Bureau at the National Association of County Meeting. I made, I've tried to make contact with the Dallas office, that hasn't been going real good, we'll, we'll pick up on that one, that one won't be hard to do. And I've got a short timeline, just from, the timeline that I put on here is strictly off the Census Bureau's website. The city of Brookings is in the process of doing a census count committee, CCC. We had one in 2010. I talked to the community development director, Mike Struck. It's sitting at the mayor's office right now to, to, names have been sent as a recommendation, they just have to designate their committee and then we'll get that one started at the, at the community. That would be quote-unquote the, the county level complete count committee when that one's formed.
Okay.
So will there be people from Sinai and Bruce and our other communities that'll be on that committee?
It should be. It was in 2010 to include like the, the school districts, the beta was involved because they got the transport, they, they know where people are, they, they might be, there's a, there's a whole realm of people, Advance, you know, it's important that groups like Advance, it's important that everyone gets counted. And one of the main things we have to start stressing now is it's all confidential. The US Census Bureau does not work with the United States Immigration Department. I mean, it, we, we obviously don't want, if you're, the Census Bureau doesn't care what color you are, where you're from, they just want to know where you live at, at the time that they're counting you. It's all that they care about. It's, it's illegal if, if an immigration per, I mean, if a Census Bureau person knocks on your door and, you know, if they see 100 people inside your house, that's what they want to do is count 100 people. They don't turn around and then call the sheriff's office and say, you got 100 people living in the house. They don't contact my office at the zoning level and, and, and do zoning complaints and things like that, that's not their job. Their job is to get a complete count of every US, of every s- person in the United States and in Brookings County. And that's all that we're looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a nine o'clock scheduled agenda item. It's an action to approve agreement number 19-48, a memorandum of understanding with the Medary chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And we have the document in hand, looking for a motion to approve.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or adjustments to the document? Commissioner Pierce.
I do have a comment and I just want to say, I fully support what we're doing with Medary Monument, so what I'm gonna say next has nothing to do with that. I, you have my support. However, this document, the way it's written, subjects future county commissions to budgetary obligations and that we are not authorized to do. And there needs to be an amendment to that, something, I think Stacy might have had some wording when we talked about this, where we could do an insert that just said, subject to the sole discretion of the Brookings County Commission, so that we don't obligate a future commission to do something that they may not have the dollars to do.
All right, then I guess I'll ask you, what would your amendment to this contract be?
Stacy, do you have what you talked about when you talked to me, the wording on that?
So it would be in this sentence here, right after this sentence, second sentence, you know, mowing at the site. And then would just be in addition to, subject to the discretion of the Brookings County Commission, so that moving forward, if there are, if there are not funds available for a future commission, this isn't saying you have to do this, it would be at their discretion on how to spend dollars if, if it comes down to making some of those budgetary decisions. If that makes sense.
We just don't want a legal liability for something if we don't have the funds to I would move to amend the document to incorporate the language that Stacy just read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on amendment. Would we read the amendment, please?
So under the Brookings County obligation portion, after this sentence, this sentence, the county will also be responsible for the upkeep of the monument site to include future repairs in the monument, mowing at the monument site, subject to the discretion of the Brookings County Commission.
Okay, everybody understands that? Do you understand the amendment? Okay.
We will clean up this document and I will visit with you about getting another signature.
We'll, we'll just change it for different signatures. All right, any other comments on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Amendment carries, so we'll now have the motion, discussion or comment says on the motion as amended. Any other comments on the motion as amended? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item I is a presentation of the check by Nancy Stewart, chapter, Regent, Medary, chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Nancy, if you'd come up to the microphone here.
Can I get the, 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 the contingency program on the very chapter that has been working on the fundraising against all of the climate issues that we have. So the Danny Richardson, Charlotte Smith, and the, and the, and the, and the, and Mary's first one.
If you all come right up here, so we can take a photograph of all of them.
So who am I handing it to?
I guess I'm the chairman, you get. They won't go in my pocket, but I'll take the job.
Thank you for working so hard.
Okay, I'll just put this.
Get a picture of that.
Newly noted, I passed the check down to Stacy, who will give it to Vicki, I'm sure, at some point in time. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item eight, the regular business. Item A is an action to approve resolution number 19-27, an order for the organization and incorporation of the Borton Beach Road District, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Comments? Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Pierce.
Ju- just, do we have something, I, I guess it's the finance office that looks at this to show that the election was held within the statute?
Yes, election was held within the statute and it passed and they brought all the ballots and all of the things into our office. So yes, it's all been gone through and it's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Vicki, any concerns about this or anything like that? I know there's road districts throughout the county and stuff, pretty similar, anything different about this one than the other one?
I don't think there's anything different, no. It should, we should be able to put on the tax rolls just like the other ones. So this is the fourth one, fourth district we have in the county.
Okay, good.
Okay, any other questions?
One last one, sorry. Did any of the agricultural people opt out, is allowed by the statute, or they all stay in the road district?
What was your question? I'm sorry.
Did any ag producers opt out of the road district?
No, with what the legal was, everyone within that legal is going to be in the road district, so, yes.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B is an action to approve resolution number 19-28, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing a five-year county plan amendments. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, we'll have any comments? Brian, I think you made some comments earlier, is there any other questions for Brian on the? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to approve resolution number 19-29, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing the submission of applications, structure number 06-157-110.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any questions or comments on that one? The only question I have is, where's that bridge at?
I'd have to look at my map.
Somewhere in the county, anyway.
It's, it's in Brookings County. The only comment I have for the first, uh, six is they were not on the five-year plan.
Right.
The last two were on the five-year plan, but there is money available for those in the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Brian, would you mind emailing us a PDF with all the bridges highlighted at some point?
Yes, I can.
That'd be great.
Yeah, cause I, I, I'm working on familiarizing myself with 220 bridges also.
It's hard to keep track of them. All right, any other comments or questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action to approve resolution number 19-30, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of application, structure number 06-170-101. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Any comments? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is an action to approve resolution number 19-31, a bridge, bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of application, structure number 06-181-230. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Any comments? If not, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action, item F is an action to approve resolution number 19-32, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of application, structure number 06227-230.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action G, action to approve resolution number, uh, 19-33, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of application, structure number 06-280-172.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Any comments? We're gonna, we're gonna give you time to catch up over there, gentlemen. We'll call the roll.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H is an action to approve resolution number 19-34, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of application, structure number 06-320-118.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, are any comments? Any comments? We'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I is an action to approve resolution number 19-35, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of application, structure number 06-150-215.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Any comments? We'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J, an action to approve resolution number 19-36, a bridge improvement program resolution authorizing submission of application, structure number 06-240-141.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments on that resolution? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K is an action to approve agreement number 19-41, an easement for use of county road right-of-way agreement between Brookings County and Casey Dairies LLP. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Any questions?
Um, Brian, is this a crossing that they're putting in? I, uh, brought it up to you guys earlier this year, but I know we had a lot of manure pipes in our roads and I've been working closely with these dairies in order to make sure that they're getting their pipes across the roads, not through our culverts, uh, cause these are standalone. So I've been reviewing these as they've been coming in. Uh, it's not been a speedy process, but at least they're taking care of it on their end.
Okay, any other questions?
Is this the new format? Then you had talked about a new easement format, is this, and has the state's attorney's office reviewed the easement, had any comments with the new form or?
I believe sta- yeah, I think Stacy reviewed it with, uh, with Dan also.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item L is an action to approve agreement number 19-50, an easement for use of county road right-of-way agreement between Brookings County and Casey Dairies LLP. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any other comments? This is a similar.
Similar situation, um, I guess the only other thing I didn't bring up is there was two current crossings in that area and then they've switched their equipment and the, and the crossings were too small, so they're just installing a larger pipe to, in, in order to handle their, their larger hose.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item M is an action to approve agreement number 19-51, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Laketon Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item S is an action to approve agreement number 19-52, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Sherman Township.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Item O, an action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a truck driver, a split position in the highway and weed departments. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Item P, the action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a heavy equipment operator in the highway department. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Item Q is a review of our update of our work plan. You have some documents here, and I think everybody had a chance to look at that, so we'll let Stacy visit about it.
In your packet was, uh, the work plan. You can kind of see in that orange color, I've been, um, busy making updates to that as some of our projects have, um, been going along. The first is roads and bridges. You can see I've updated the river bridges. Um, construction started, but of course, like Brian had mentioned, until we get below flood stage, uh, not much can be done out there. Um, no new change with the Sinai Bridge, still slated to be done next year. Um, as was done, uh, today, we amended that five-year plan to add some bridges for submission of preservation engineering grants. The five-year plan will be, uh, the public hearing will be held on September third. Um, we are planning our county tour on the nineteenth, so we'll be able to go out and physically look at some of these projects that are part of this plan that you'll be approving on the third. Um, and I and I think you've already seen the draft plan from Brian. He presented that at budget time, but we'll be we'll be looking at that and doing some more things with that here next, uh, next meeting. The basin electric bridge, uh, as Brian had mentioned, um, well underwared, doing maybe some subcontractor work left. Um, township grant dollars, we did the first round of applications, approved those. Second round, they were due at the end of July. I need to schedule a time with Larry and Ryan to get together to review the applications that we have now received. We have received, uh, I believe for four more projects, I believe. Is that right? Um, so we'll have to take a look at those and bring those back to the full board once we get our recommendations in place. And we have budgeted another hundred thousand dollars in 2020 to do a similar program again. Um, on the jail expansion, still working through the CMAR contract, joint jurisdiction committee, um, final draft review will be September nineteenth. We've been, um, going through that draft ordinance, still, you know, specifically looking at, most recently, the rural residential zone. So hopefully then, um, with some action on that on September nineteenth, then those will get sent to both city and county planning commissions for for their review and approval. The mental health task force, they had their last meeting on July twenty-second. I believe they'll be coming to present to the commission, um, some written recommendations, uh, that they have coming out of that. We did have that presentation at the beginning of June, so I you heard. I think you have an idea of what they're going to be asking, but, um, they'll be be presenting something here at a future, uh, a future meeting. The the, um, one that I think will probably do, they'll probably want sooner rather than later is to appoint a commissioner to the community coalition now that has developed and is sort of taking the reins and moving this this subject and this this forward from here now that the task force is, um, has finished their work. So, um, we'll have to look at doing that. No big changes with BCOAC or or Beta Union negotiations. We did approve those contracts on July twenty-third, the last meeting, so so that's good. Three-year contracts are in place that start January one. Um, with the overpass, the commission did approve spending the five thousand toward a cost benefit survey for that interchange, um, the grant application. They you did that back in June. Ordinances were updated on the county website to meet that new state statute that went into effect July one, where you had to have the most recent version of your ordinances only on the website. So, um, we worked hard all spring to get into compliance with that. Um, with the towns, uh, the small towns and school districts, I did send out a letter after we did the last work plan review and, uh, didn't receive any responses back from anybody who wants a commissioner to come to any of those meetings again. So if there's something else that you want to do, that that's a discussion point to have, but, um, we're still. And then the last thing, the Humane Society currently in the provisional budget for fiscal year 2020 is ten thousand dollars. And that's all the the updates I had unless you had some additional things you wanted updated or some additional topics to add to the work plan. We can do that now.
Any questions or comments on the work plan? Seems like we're following the plan pretty well. Okay. Saying none. Move on to...
Well, let me ask you real quick here. Do we want to take something off of here then? Or, I mean, if if meetings with small towns and school districts, kind of got no feedback, do we want to take that off and say?
That's your decision.
I don't know if we want to do this at the end of the year, or just this is an update of where we're at, and we're going to look at this and make larger changes on a on a discussion, or I guess that would be my question, because it doesn't make sense to have stuff on here and and make it, uh, three or four pages when the ship has sailed. So it looks like that type of thing is we don't need to do that. There's not interest, so we don't need to take leave it on there, so.
In our mission statement where we have our goals and our objectives, I think there's a a goal that has to do with the townships and and the cities, and we need to be doing something, maybe not this, but there has, I think there should be something on to meet that goal. I apparently this isn't it, though.
Yeah, I don't know what that looks like after having reached out to the clerks and, um, mayors and clerks of all the small towns and the the business managers of the school districts. I didn't get anything back, so I don't know what that looks like, I guess, what what we could do to continue that.
When did we put this? We just put this on last year, right? So it's been a year? Has it been two years this has been under?
Couple of years, I think.
Couple of years now?
Four updates on it, it looks like, so.
I think our intentions were when a small town would have a road project or something to make sure that we, if we have a county road going through there that were updated, that they're going to have a road project going on, uh, that we need to do whatever we need to do in the city also to work together on the project. I mean, it's, uh, we start, I think it started kind of with the project in Volga. Um, we, you know, we had a similar situation in Aurora when we did the main road through there. But if the city's going to be doing a sewer project or something, you know, we kind of maybe, you know, Brian probably on board with the mayor or something and talked about it, but, uh, if there's any way we can help these small communities through the construction project or not, just to be informed what's going on so they're not closing down our road, uh, that happened similar earlier this month. They'd had a situation in Volga. The road was closed down. Brian didn't know about it. I mean, it's kind of, that's that's why I wanted the intentions were just to be on board and informed what was going on in the small town.
Questions or comments? Leave it there for now?
But I mean, if we're not invited, I mean, that's...
Means they're doing really well.
Our hands are tied there, so.
I think the intent was to, you know, those types of communications go on on a daily basis anyway without having us attend a formal meeting of their council.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so if there are problems, we would certainly expect them to ask us to to weigh in. So at this point, things are going well, and I I think it can stay there. An extra page, maybe, but I think it it works. We're available if they need us. Any other comments on that? Okay. Uh, state's attorney's office report. That's a report. Okay. Let's go ahead and do the commissioner reports. We'll start with Commissioner Pierce. This is really quick, so I hope you're ready.
I am. Thank you. On July thirtieth, I attended the joint jurisdiction meeting, and as Stacy reported, we think we're going to have our rev- a final review of the joint jurisdiction ordinance in September, and we continue to wrestle with the issue of, uh, rural residential housing. And and, um, I don't know that we've actually come to a consensus on that, and we're still working on that. Attended the public affairs meeting on August first, and at that meeting, th- there was an announcement that on August thirteenth, at eleven-thirty, Senator Thune will be at the Wilbert Square, and will be doing, um, answer and, uh, question and answer session, and people might want to put that on their calendar if you're interested in attending. More information will be coming out about that later. I am going to report just a little bit on NACO. I know we've had a meeting since then, but I wasn't here for that meeting. And and when I attended NACO, this is my fifth year on the commission, my first time going to NACO, and I really did learn a lot. And it was a very worthwhile experience. We've talked already about some of the things that came out of that, what's going on with the two thousand twenty census and how important that is to our county and and future funding, and the IPAS information that Mr. Hill's working with. And I talked quite a bit with the FEMA people about IPAS, and I'm going to look forward. Hopefully, I'll be able to meet with them when when Bob does. That'll be great. I also attended a session that had to do with national standards on criminal justice, and and that session was enthralling, might be the right right word to use. There was a lot of conversation about pre-trial detention. And you might remember that that the sheriff and the commission, um, agreed to participate in a South Dakota study on pre-trial detention at a at one of our July meetings, and we're going to be looking at that. There's going to be a real push for some national standards on pre-trial detention coming down, because there's no question about the people that are being held for pre-trial detention. There's an inordinate number of people that are low income and people of color that are held for pre-trial detention, and and those are issues that that we'll be looking at. The other thing that's going to be coming down and that there's some national push for, when somebody is arrested and they're and they're put into jail on pre-trial detention, they lose all their governmental benefits right then. Whether they're found guilty, not guilty, whatever, they lose their benefits. And if if they later aren't convicted of the charge, or if they're convicted and then they get out of jail, they have to go through the whole application process again. So if you have people on pre-trial detention, for example, that have children, and they were getting benefits, they lose all of that. If they were getting housing, they lose all of that. And so there's a push to look at changing how those, uh, benefits, governmental benefits are handled for people on pre-trial detention, and we'll see more of that as that comes down. It'll be interesting. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. It is nine-thirty. I'm going to suspend these reports, and we're going to move to our nine-thirtieth agenda item. That's a presentation by BKV, and we'll have you up and introduce yourselves. We have a new person today.
We do have a new person. I figured you were probably getting tired of saying me all the time.
This is an update for us. Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Good to see you all. Um, my name is Bruce Schwartzman with BKV. I've got Daniel Reed with me as well. Daniel's one of our lead architects, uh, also. What we wanted to do today was just give you a snapshot on where things are in the process of the project, uh, and discuss, primarily focus on the exterior design that we're creating, the site plan itself, and the exterior building. Um, you'll see some images that we'll go through, and what we tried to do is go back to the design images that you all shown some time ago and say, is there some, is there a possibility of some changes? Because when we did some tours and we talked further, there's some very, very well-done precast buildings that create a nice, uh, a nice appearance and can represent, I think, what the county is hoping to represent and actually be a very economical approach to constructing this building. We do want to discuss that a little bit, because that might be, if if that's an approach that the board is willing, uh, to have us look at, um, we need to know fairly soon because that impacts structural systems and the whole overall layout of the building. Um, also, once the CM is on board, too, we'd like to engage them in the discussion. So there's there's a little bit more to be discussed about the exterior design of the building. Um, the images that you're about to see, the materials that you are handed out, are we connected through? Do we need to? Do we need to be connected? There we go. Now we're up on the board. Okay. So as we flip through it, just some general images that you all know on the cover. We go to the next page. So this this was the design that we showed when we were looking at using limestone on the building and some brick and trying to blend some things together. And I think this was the last design that we presented to the board, uh, and when we did a whole series of design studies, this seemed to be the one. Daniel, could you go to the next image? This seemed to be the one, I think, that we got the discussion that, yes, this was a good approach. Let's go with this, um, after kind of vetting it out a little bit more. Then as we, and again, we added windows to the exterior. We, you know, in a jail facility, it can be fairly stark. I mean, the reality is windows are not there. We we can create natural light through skylights and other things that create actually more of a secure approach than using exterior windows on jail. The windows were added really to to help this facility blend to the neighborhood. The stone materials, the detailing was helped to respect the courthouse as well as blend to the neighborhood a little bit more and make it feel a little more humanistic in the in the neighborhood. So things were done, tweaks were made, the the design evolved to really try to feel a little more in scale with the neighborhood. Um, and that's what was shown in here. And again, a lot of these features could still be kept in a in a precast, but the precast panel, it gets its efficiency and the repetitiveness of the panel, the simplicity of the panel, so things like, excuse me, things like that. So as we go to the next, uh, I'm going to switch gears a little bit. So the next one is really the site design, uh, the site planning. And we sat down with our landscape architect, and I think Danielle could probably talk to the plan a little bit more, but I think the goal was to to, again, we're we're trying to create a nice building that is a complement to what's going on in the area, as well as provide landscape that helps to 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 soften the environment and reinforce a more of a park-like feel. Danielle, do you want to talk about what plants are where?
Sure. So the the site plan essentially hasn't changed from the last time, uh, we presented this concept. So the intent is for the north quarter to match the residential, um, aesthetic and to continue the...
Have you pull the mic up just a little bit closer so everybody can hear you well? Thank you.
So so the intent of the the landscape, uh, architecture was to complement the the residential, um, landscape and to continue picking up cues that has already been presented within the site along the the northwestern quarter. So the landscape, uh, along the building is going to be a a combination of of juniper, uh, salvia, um, daylilies. So it's it's really trying to have a lower, um, impact and to transition between the sidewalk and the building, um, an emphasis on low-maintenance landscape to minimize the work that your folks have to do at the county, as well as have a few, um, hackberry trees along the the transition between the sidewalk and the road to have a transition in in height between the building and the road.
Again, this is a first, a first blush, uh, at you all seeing this. So, you know, it's going to take some time to think about it, and of course, we can get into more discussion, but it's it's not an overly abundance of of trying to add too many things, but just trying to soften it, like Danielle said, with more of a lower scale. Um, and of course, we're preserving all of the other trees around the courthouse that are currently existing. There are a couple that will be disturbed based on the new addition, but all the other trees on the other green areas will be left as is, even though the plan doesn't show those, those would be in place. Does the board have any comments on this one at all? The floor plan has been evolving. I mean, we've been working closely with Bart and the sheriff to go through the plan and make it, uh, as efficient. It's basically stayed very, very similar to we started before with some minor nuanced changes just for operational flows and efficiency of the layout of the space. So the jail plan that you're all seeing up there right now is is very, very similar to what's been worked on all the way around. On the very top left corner is the vehicle Sallyport, which comes into a booking area, pre-book in a booking area. Uh, then as you transition down off to the right of that, that spiral is wedge shapes are all the housing units, very similar to what we saw at Renville. So those are all the housing units. It allows you to to process, possibly properly, uh, separate and segregate inmates. Uh, those are, those will increase the 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 ability to do that and create better safe conditions that you currently that you currently don't have in the jail, and especially the ability to separate and segregate, uh, the additional program spaces as well as kitchen and all the other support spaces. So very, very similar to what's been before, but just more well-defined than what's been shown before. I think the next is, we're going to run a quick little video, so a three, three-dimensional kind of walkthrough of what's been developed so far. Again, we're still refining it, but it gives you kind of an overview of of what we're developing, um, in accordance with American Correctional Association standards and good good detention design practices. So this was the exterior as it was previously. Um, we'll show you some some what, some ideas that we're looking at for the for the, uh, exterior finishes as we get into that. This is kind of a pre-program. So you're in the vehicle Sallyport here, going into the pre-book area. There'll be a sliding door there. Again, we'll paint, we'll paint the walls prettier in gray block. That's pretty stark. Uh, again, this goes into one of the interview rooms there, an interview room and talks area. Uh, you go through that door, and then it brings you again into the booking area. So we're looking down the booking hallway, at the booking desk. Again, some detailing that still needs to be refined, a a co-op cooperative inmate seating area within the open booking. Again, you can see skylights to bring natural light into some of these areas. Use of acoustical ceilings, carpets, a lot of materials that are durable, but yet yet , uh, help to control noise. This, I think, is looking into one of the cells, stainless steel fixtures, concrete bunks, your your general standard cell approach. This is looking down your main circulation corridor. Off to the right is program spaces, classrooms, a recreational space. Uh, classrooms used for GED, it's used for church services. Um, and then again, as you come into this unit right there is considered your seg unit, uh, which is direct supervision from what's in front of you. is direct supervision from what's in front of you, which is central control. And then as you go around, you can start to see in the various housing units, good clarity of sight. You know, so again, inmates have adequate space for movement, for space that they should have. We are going with a higher railing system. You'll notice on the railings up here, we've gone with a very high, all the way to ceiling railing system that's being done around the country to prevent suicide risk issues and potential issues. So that's been something, it's been more of a standard, it's been occurring. Acoustical panels on the wall to control noise. Again, the housing units, each run from one to one is very similar. They all have the same kind of amenities. There are some sub-day rooms underneath those railing systems below. Again, it allows you to better utilize the space that you do have. I'm not sure what, oh, this is going into your central control, master control. So this is a 24/7 kind of man space to observe and control not only doors, but also to watch inmate. And you can see there's really a 360 or 180-degree view over that area. I love the way we come down the steps sometimes. We are looking at a two-tone of the hallway. You'll see there's two different patterns on the floor. And a lot of facilities that's used for inmate supervision, they're told to walk to one side of the corridor or on the tile versus a carpet or whatever. It's a management tool. This goes down into our hallway where we have laundry, as well as the entrances to the program doors, and then some offices, some admin offices on the end that are kind of being displaced from the other and puts them in the secured perimeter for better supervision and movement. Again, there's a library space in there, a small library space, and your classroom kind of GED, church service kind of space. Laundry space, yeah? Yep. So I think that's about it from, and again, we thought this was important for you to have kind of a snapshot of where we are with this, and this gives you a good understanding. We, you know, with today's technology, we develop everything three-dimensional. Not only does it help us to resolve issues as we see them in the design, but it's a great tool for the clients to see, here's how much glass we're looking at in a door, here's the materials we're looking, it just really helps. It's like those cars are floating. So I think the next one, unless you all, unless anybody's got any questions on that, the next is really just a picture that shows examples of where precast has been used successfully on government-type facilities. Some are very high design, some are very simplistic. At the very top left, I think, is a jail quartz facility that was built adjacent to an older facility that is in North Dakota. Again, you can see through the use of patterning, banding, there is a thin brick application so you can get a precast panel that actually has brick in it. It's a thin brick application, so even though that looks like it has laid-up blood brick, it's actually part of a precast brick system. The one on the top right facility down in southern Minnesota, the historic component you can see is off on the left-hand side, but that whole arched piece and everything off on the other section was all precast panel with bricks. So again, you can use form liners. There's a lot of things we can do to add pattern and texture to it. So, and then I think with the next image, what we were going to show is, you know, this is actually, shows more examples of different types of patterns. You can, you know, Menards and some of these Home Depots use precast panels, but it's a very, very rudimentary precast panel approach. You can see on some of these others, you can get a much more refined and sophisticated look by using precast panels, by doing different things with different materials. So anyway, this was just to give the board a kind of an idea of some of the different paneling. The next image we show then shows the idea of using precast panels, how the building might evolve. Now, I'm not stating that this is, or even suggesting that this is the final design. This is an iteration. What I really want to get from the board today to find out if you feel comfortable stating that we could use a precast panel system in exploring to finalize a design. Now, you might not feel totally comfortable today. That might have to wait until the construction manager comes back. But as we, for us to continue to develop the building, there's a very, very different layout and structural system of a precast panel versus a laid-up block wall and other systems. So that's the one thing we're trying to get on this, is if there's a comfortable level of the county board. Certain materials were shown before. We know that we can create a very, very respectable, nice, quality building that respects the neighborhood, that respects the environment that it's in. Matter of fact, if I'm correct, I think this building used a lot of precast panels, if I'm not, I'm correct. I believe so. So, any comments? Any thoughts? Or should we just continue?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's actually back a couple of pages, not the precast, but you know, when you were showing us the interior of the jail, and that's the first time, I think, that I've seen those, do you have something that shows where the new and the old connect and how that works?
We might. I don't know if...
The site, well, let's see, okay.
Let's go to the plan for a second, just like, Commissioner, you're talking about right in that connection area, right?
Right, where the new part and the old part will be connecting and how that will look.
Sure. So if you can see my cursor, I'm drawing a line essentially where the existing facility occurs.
Right.
And so this portion is going to be the remodeled portion. And our intent is to keep the shell of the space, the structure of the space, and essentially take out any non-load-bearing elements within and then infill with the new plan. And so in terms of an exterior aesthetic, the backside will remain the same. It's going to be on the east side where the connection between the new is going to be where the black line is shown here, and essentially the gray with the white line here is going to make that connection.
And we are looking at using a stain or a paint on the existing brick, again, to blend it in. Because right now, I mean, one of the comments that was made early on is, the LEC, when that was built, didn't really, it was its own building. It didn't try to blend or create any kind of campus feeling. And instead of creating an addition that was yet another kind of different material, we're trying to blend them all together in a different way. Now, I don't know if we specifically answered your question, Commissioner, because I think you were looking for that specific link.
Interior.
The interior link, please. We could have that for you by the next time we come.
That's okay. I was just curious if you had it. I'd like, I would have liked to have seen it, but it doesn't, it'll be fine. Thank you.
I would assume that as we look at this, it's going to look much like the other part of the jail because you were modeling it. It's going to have the brick, the same door.
Yeah, there's not a lot...
Casing's the same look, feel, basically, as this, except different roads, different functions.
Yeah. Once you get to the south of kind of where that stairwell is shown, is that block of stairware where the cursor is, we really don't do, there's a few doors I think we're modifying, but we're not doing a lot of work in there. Now, we, by code, we do have to run a sprinkler system into the existing facility. So we are going to be running a sprinkler line into the existing facility. Other than that, a lot of the finishes and things like that, yeah, there'll be some cleanup where things are tying in, but we're not currently planning on doing a lot in that existing area, other than the block that Danielle showed you that's kind of getting gutted and remodeled.
When you showed us those cells there, just, I guess it'd be south of the octagonal observation room, these cells, exactly. Our purpose for those rooms is...
So it's considered a seg area. So if you have somebody that's on a high offense, the complexity with jails is you're trying to hold a certain number of people, and you're trying to maximize utilization of that space. And so what you've got to think about is every one of those wedge units, if you put people in there that don't get along, you suddenly render the other beds in that unit useless because you can't house those people together. So what you do is you break them up into these little wedges to create maximum usability of space. The seg units are people in the high offense, you know, whatever that high offense has been, and the sheriff probably could talk to him more. But by them being right next to central control, then it's a direct over-the-shoulder, looking in there, seeing what's going on. And those people, so there's four beds in there, and they're all single bunk. So again, you're not putting a lot of people in there. And you can lock those people down individually and rotate them out, you know, by statute in a lot of sense in American Correctional Association standards, you need to give people a certain amount of time out of their cell, but that's an area where you can hold people with more severe offenses.
Was that also an area, I'm thinking, one of the preliminary designs that we looked at those rooms, Sheriff, you might remember this, we talked about mental health holds. If we had to use those rooms, if they weren't being used for severe issues, would we be able to still use those for 24 or 48-hour mental health hold?
Those could be for that, as well as, Commissioner, these two where we have the cursor right now, those are considered what was talked about way back when, is adding the safe rooms. So you can bring people in, put them in here, and they can actually be observed directly from the medical unit. We've worked through a whole series of things where there's going to be cameras in all these that are going to be observed as well. So you'll have a lot of flexibility to hold mental health as well as high-risk individuals.
I know that's a concern of the community that we handle that, mental health holds, at least a 24 and 48 hour, obviously not longer than that, when you need to move them.
And another thing, Commissioner, that we see nationally is these, the booking cells, so that if you have somebody that you bring them in, you need to do some evaluations, some classification, you need to have a social worker come in and check with those individuals for their stability and their mental health, because sometimes you're able to divert them to some other facility that might be able to serve them better. And a lot of times, that's done in your booking area.
Okay. Yeah, I saw the two rooms in the booking area for that, then. And they're like a cell, basically, have facilities. Okay.
And the temporary juvenile holding area is where then?
So I think we have, so we have, yeah, right there. And then the rooms across from that are meant to be juvenile holding as well that could be in that area. In addition, we do have one cell within the booking area that could be used for juveniles also. And we are, I don't know if we've done it yet, Commissioner, but we did have a conversation with a person, she's with the State Department of Corrections, that deals specifically with juveniles, and we actually are going to send her the plan. One of the things she did recommend that we did include was wherever you have a juvenile cell, and this specific one, I think up in here is a juvenile, potentially a juvenile hold. So you could bring somebody down in this back hallway and into that area and then have total sight and sound separation from the adult areas. The one thing that she recommended, which I thought was a phenomenal idea, was to have two separate walls, so the sound doesn't travel as much from one. They understand there's certain things you can't control, but it was a good approach to providing additional acoustical separation that we've also employed in this.
Bruce, and Danielle, to your specific point about the use of precast on the building, I think one of our earlier conversations was that we would want to see physical tangible samples of that precast product. And I think in the instance of this particular project, understanding the building in elevation and how it ties together with various eras of buildings becomes very important. I am still concerned, as I think I've been saying for a while, that we need to see a section through the building as it relates to the courthouse in general. I personally want to understand the street, the opposite side of the street, through the holding area and the cell area towards the courthouse, so that we really get a chance to understand what it means to be a pedestrian with the proposed changes to the landscape feature, so that the community and the neighborhood really understand what that means. Those drawings, I think, are critical for everyone to understand the project in a more complete way.
So Commissioner, what you're talking about is really, you have maybe an elevation of the courthouse, since we don't have all the documents, of course, or even if it's just the outline of the courthouse, and a section of the new one. You see that height relationship and those proportion relationships.
Yep.
Yep, we can do this.
And then elevations when it comes to materials specifically.
Yep, definitely.
As we go back to the discussion on precast versus conventional construction techniques, we're taking an awful lot of stuff done in precast, and I agree that some of it, close up overnight, you go, how did they lay all those bricks, get that done? And so precast, I don't have a problem or an issue with it. I see some advantage timing-wise. You can put precast up rather quickly. Durability is my question. What are we looking at for lifelong longevity of precast versus conventional building techniques?
Commissioner, longevity typically is very good. So with a precast panel, what you end up getting is, you get like an eight-inch-thick concrete interior panel, you get an insulation on the exterior, and then a cavity, and then an exterior concrete panel, which is your finished panel. So in that 11- to 12-inch or so, or a little bit more, matter of fact, it's probably closer to 13 inches, you get your complete wall assembly, and they can put electrical boxes and things like that in there. So like you say, the speed of erection, the speed of construction, so you tilt that wall up, and you're pretty well-ready to go, other than paint and things like that. If you do standard construction, standard block veneer construction, you're building a block wall, you're setting your ties, you're setting your insulation, your moisture barrier on your exterior wall, and then you're putting your finished veneer on top of it. So that's what adds a lot of the cost and the material, the material cost to it and the construction cost and in time. But you can, as far as durability, if anything, your precast probably is going to give you a longer durability, just because of all the joints that are susceptible to deterioration in a standard layup block wall.
I know, last night, I walked around the university's new building up there, the one with Starbucks in it, and that was a precast building. And I watched those panels go up, and the efficiency of how they constructed that, how fast that was went up. And when I walked around it and looked at it, it's beautifully designed, and you really can't even tell it's precast. I kept looking at it and thinking, was this all, I know it was precast, but it was pretty nicely done. So I think we're seeing those construction techniques, and I think we need to explore the cost, savings benefit, I don't know if there's any. If you're telling me they're just as durable, that satisfies me. As far as the design of those panels, there are options that you're going to obviously present to us. Can they design anything you design? Can they build anything you design? Or are we stuck with something they've got in a catalog?
No, 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 no.
Completely custom.
It is completely custom. The only difference is, you don't have as much undulation of your walls going in and out. A lot of times, you tend to create more of a box, you know, if you will. The efficiency is in the pattern and the redundancy of the panel. You can do a variety of things. And you can see with these, these all have a variety of materials that were used, and embeds and things like this, you can attach bands, there's a lot of things you can do to it to give it, to give it a design impression. It's just, if you have walls that you're trying to stagger the face of your walls back and forth and do a lot, that creates complexity and difficulty with precast. It ends up just running the cost up. But if it's fairly linear and you're adding elements to create that design expression, you can do that well in precast. But I think it's our responsibility to come back to the board, and I'm writing a number of notes here, to come back and show you these variety of things, give you the information about the cost and durability and things like that between one versus the others, so you have all the information and feel comfortable and make some of these decisions.
Thank you. Any other, you have more? I guess we interrupted you.
There was one last slide that maybe we didn't present fully, which was just showing the other view.
Oh, the other side, yeah.
In a potential precast option.
But again, I think the Commissioner's point, we'll come back with more section relationship, more elevation, material samples. We'll develop it more so you see where we're going. But I think at this point, we'll look at the precast and see, I think, my challenge or my feel is, I've said, I've talked about the undulation and difficulty. Our challenge is to create the best precast design we can create, show it to you and see how that feels.
And I think some of the banding and relief that's on the existing courthouse and the proportionality of that makes a lot of sense, and you can do that in a low-relief on a precast panel, and it still looks really good. I personally think exposed aggregate on any of this is ridiculous. So the exposed aggregate is going to look ridiculous on this kind of application. So if we stay far, far, far away from that, I would be much happier. But a lot of the banding and the low-relief that is present on the courthouse building, I feel like is more appropriate than kind of mass blocking kinds of situations on the overall facade. So that would be my thought. The one question I had on the interior is that in the control area, we've seen examples where the control area itself is fully enclosed, and we've seen examples where that's more open. Renville was an example where that was more open, and I'm wondering if there's a particular logic to having one versus the other.
Yeah. So if you have a separate central control, if you have a separate enclosed area where nobody can get to it, it's earthquake or happens. I mean, it's, because what you're creating is a space that, no matter what the incident is, that's going to continue your... is, that's going to continue, your mechanical system's separate, your electrical system's separate, that space is going to continue to operate, and it can't be compromised in any way. If you have that separate, we've done facilities where the county does dispatch, and the dispatch also does door controls and camera monitoring. If you have that space, then you can just have an open control station, which is basically a post. If you don't, you need that central control room, and in your situation, you need that central control room.
Okay, thanks for the explanation.
Yeah, one of the things I noticed in Olivia was kind of that open control area, and the arrows that marked it, inmates had to stay on the right-hand side and can't cross over the left-hand side because they're within three feet of grabbing somebody in the control physically, so I like the idea that they can't get to them.
So in that particular facility, in their sheriff's office, where they do dispatch, that's where they do door controls.
Yeah.
And now it's separate from everything else, and so that can't be compromised. So if we were to change it, but see, the county doesn't, I don't think you do dispatch.
No.
I think it's city dispatch. So again, logically, wouldn't make sense because of that.
We're looking at a backup dispatch center, but it'd probably be right now, negotiations are off-site, quite a ways away from our dispatch we have. So obviously, if there's an emergency, dispatch we have at the police station now, we don't want to have an issue that's in a few blocks of that, and we want that second dispatch to be farther away. So we are addressing that issue. Aren't we, Marty? I thought so. We've had several discussions. Anything else?
That is all from, and then we're still, schedule-wise, big picture, schedule-wise, we're still looking sometime in September, and again, it's not critical, but sometime in that September period to wrap up this design development phase, which is, we're putting a lot of detail to it. We want to work with the CM once they're hired and confirm the budget, make sure we're on board, go through the iterations we have to go through with you, I think, is the landscape and finalize the landscape, and talk about the exterior and get this whole exterior component put together, and then the budget. So again, by sometime in September, early October, we wrap up what's considered as design development phase, make sure we're on target, present that all back to the board at that point in time, and then we'll go into final construction documents with the idea of bidding next spring, late winter, next spring. I'd like to get it on the street in February if possible, January or February.
As we get down to the final design, and we've approved the final design, I'd like us to make sure that we have a public hearing to show those designs to the public, and let them know where we're at. So we'll have to schedule that somewhere in that timeframe.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, any other questions? Hang on, thank you very much.
Thank you, Buck.
At this point, we'll move along, we'll go to Commissioner Boersmo, we'll finish those, and then we'll go back to Stacy's report, your report.
It's been a pretty quick and quiet two weeks, other than 4H achievement days last weekend, I was at the barbecue social on August 1st, serving and watching fashion review and checking out the exhibits. So that was a great week for 4H in Brookings County, and that's pretty much the extent of my stuff this last two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Krogman.
Excuse me, just a pretty light week also for me, had a phone conference with Brenda from Beta on potential building spots, and that's about it.
Rachel Johnson.
On the 30th, attended the beef show, numbers are up on the beef side, there was over 50 entries, which is good to see out there, a lot of young kids, so looks in the future there'll be some more. On Thursday night, attended the 4H pork barbecue, took tickets, the fashion review show was going on while supper was going, and then later on, I stayed for the round robin competition, and congratulations to Emily Nold, the champion, and Drew Peterson, the reserve. Like to thank all the volunteers, the Swiftel staff, and all the supporters of 4H, it went well, a lot of people attended, and they actually ran out of a few food items at the pork barbecue, so it was well-attended.
Thank you. My reports are rather short, I did attend the National Associated Counties, Commissioner Pearson, some of the same, beating she went to, only another sub-subject of law enforcement. The one that I attended that probably was most interesting was transportation, I attended three different transportation ones, but the one that was the most interesting is that everybody's having problems with flooding, damage, and natural disasters this year, not only in South Dakota, but Nebraska got heavily hit, Omaha area, and all those, and how they handled their emergency management during those particular issues. I think Bob was at a few of those meetings, too. And the lessons that they learned are lessons that we can all learn as we watch those particular things. We got by rather lucky compared to some of the communities in some of the states and some of the counties, so it was interesting to hear how they handled it, what they learned from it, that would be lessons for us if we have those types of issues in the future. Also, in the transportation area, with some areas of funding for bridges and emergency repairs, and the things that are being done through FEMA, and how that funding has got to come down in hopes of bridge funding and repair for roads and repair for other things. So I haven't seen anything in the news that they've, Congress has appropriated those funds, but I assume that it will be in the future. Do you attend a few of those meetings also?
I did.
You would agree that we're like everything else waiting to hear, but at the same time, there was a reaction to all those types of emergencies, so with that.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, I forgot one thing. Can I interrupt?
You may.
At the public affairs meeting, Doug Post asked whether, at our 4H achievement days, and I just forgot to combine those two things, that if we'd ever considered having a carnival going on out at the Swiftel along with that, that would draw in more people and would make it somewhat a county fair atmosphere doing that? And I told him that I would come back and mention that to whoever's serving on the 4H expansion and promotion committee. So this is my reach out to you on that, to see if that would be something that they would be interested in exploring further. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have our Commission Department Director's report.
I handed out the tentative agenda for the SDACC Fall Convention coming up September 16th, 17th. Does anyone know now that they definitely do or definitely do not plan to attend that?
What was the date on that again?
September 16th and 17th. The first sessions, I do have rooms out at the Rancho out in Pier, that's where it is this year. The first session starts at 10:00 with a keynote address on that Monday, the 16th. So if there's anyone interested in going out Sunday, I do have rooms for both Sunday and Monday nights, so I guess I'm looking for, do you plan to attend, and how many nights do you plan to be out there?
I'll have to get back to you.
I will be there both.
Both nights?
Yep.
Okay, but you do plan to attend?
Yes, I do, but I will, yeah, I will probably drive in.
Okay.
And if there's a car going out on Monday morning, I'd like to ride, and then I just need one night.
And so Larry, you're going to go, but you do need a room, but just for one night?
Yep.
And you as well, okay?
Same ideas, yeah.
And Mike, you're not sure yet.
Not sure, but I would go out in the morning also if I attend, so you don't need the Sunday night room.
Okay. The theme this year is celebrating county's Mardi Gras style, so if we want to dress up, you can be creative and come up with some ideas and let me know. The county site tour is planned for Monday, August 19th at 2:00, we'll meet out at the highway shop, and then we'll go, Brian and I will come up with a list of different sites. If you have anything that you do, you know, in particular do want to go look at that day, let me, just shoot me an email, let me know, and we'll be getting that put together, so that's in a couple of weeks on the 19th, starting at 2:00.
Stacy, when we do that, are we going to have any tour of our county shop as part of that?
We sure can.
I would be interested, based on all these conversations that we've been having, maybe taking a look around out there, if that would work.
Yeah, we could start there, you know, tour, because that's where we're going to meet, so we could start there at 2:00 and tour around the shop, and then go out from there. We do have a, I do have a beta bus that will be available for us to take. We have received a couple of election notices, there's one for South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance Board of Directors, if you're interested on being on that, or I handed out this morning the SDML Board of Trustees election notice, those two items, if you're interested, again, let me know if you're interested in running with that, and we can work through that process. On Thursday, August 15th, the parking lot at the 1921 building is going to be crack-sealed and repainted. 1921, or the Mills proper, or Mills Development is going to be doing that project, but we're working with them to notify the people in the neighborhood that that parking lot will be closed down for just that one day, that Thursday. We're going to send out letters to neighbors and neighbors in the area, as well as, we have some windshield flyers that we're going to put out when vehicle, if vehicles are parked there. Mills is going to let all of their tenants know from the 1921 building, but we'll be reaching out to the churches and the museum and the neighbors to let them know, working with Marty as well, to make sure that that parking lot is free and clear, because we can get, if we can get everybody cleared out, they can come in and in and out in one day and have it done. So been working with Mills Development and the sheriff on that, so again, that's August 15th, that's a Thursday. Looking ahead to department head reviews, so we can get something on the calendar for doing those. So we have a meeting on October 22nd, and I know this is a ways out, but I want to, I'd just as soon get this scheduled now. We could do it that afternoon, after our meeting on the 22nd, or we could go to the next Tuesday, the 29th, and then we have, we could do it either morning or afternoon, so do either of those.
Town on the 22nd, beer.
And I'm not at town on the 29th.
How about a different day? If you look at October, I believe we have some department head, a department head maybe that's gone on the 15th, but of course, we could always reschedule one person for another time to, or we could look at, if we move away from Tuesdays, is there another day that works better?
Which days are commissioned here, 22nd?
The 8th and the 22nd. The 8th is kind of early for our timeline, so I was looking later in the month.
When do we finish our budget stuff?
Budgets will be done at the end of September.
End of September, last September meeting?
Yep, the last September meeting on the 24th is when we will approve the annual budget, the provisional is September 3rd.
The week of the 8th, or later in the week following, would work a lot better, personally. The last two weeks of the month are terrible. Okay?
Thursdays, what about like the 17th?
We have E911 that morning, but that usually only lasts maybe an hour or so, so we could do, could do that.
Do we need more than half a day? I'd be available in the afternoon that day, I just can't in the morning.
I think it would just, yeah, half a day, between four and five hours. If they, if we go every half hour, it's plenty. 17th in the afternoon, anybody? Is anybody a no? And if there are department heads that aren't available that day, we'll have to work around that.
Do it in the afternoon.
Yes, starting 12:31 o'clock.
I don't care, I mean, just depends, I'd like to be able to get finished up that day, if we have enough time, if we need to start at noon.
Yeah, I'll, yep. I'll look at, I'll kind of map out a schedule, I think there's seven of us, so.
Wherever you feel we can get done, if we can start.
Three and a half hours, but you need probably a half hour or so lead time to kind of prepare what you want to, how you want to proceed, so.
Start at noon.
Start at noon, probably be wrapped up for sure then by 4:30, 5:00.
Okay.
October 17th at noon. Okay. On July 16th, or actually on the 15th, Sean had sent out an email about doing some cybersecurity training, letting you know that you'd be getting an email the next day from KNOW, before BE and the number four. So on the 16th of July, you received an email for you to do that cybersecurity training, and it takes about 45 minutes, less than an hour. It's not too bad, but if you haven't done that, please do that. And Sean knows who you are who haven't done it. He's keeping track.
Would Sean mind sending that email to those of us again that haven't done it?
Sean, behind the magic curtain, can you resend the email, or I could forward it to?
Mine must have got lost.
Yes.
Send it to me again.
I did it. I did it.
Commissioner Bartley is the only one who has done it, we'll just put it out there.
I got the naughty email yesterday.
For the record, I didn't fail the first time, so, yes.
I get anything from Sean, I'm not clicking on it.
Oh, goodness. It's not a trick, this was not a trick. Look at, he put on the thing, yes, I can, look at, he's talking to us from behind the...
The Wizard of Oz, I swear.
He is the great and powerful Oz. Okay, the last thing before, just some upcoming dates, I did receive a call from a gentleman yesterday. Jeff Pester lives about two and a half miles east of the Bushnell Corner, right on Highway 14, and he asked that, he wanted to shoot off some fireworks this Saturday at dusk to do just a small family celebration. What usually happens with these is we get a request, and it's put on the agenda as an action item, but because he wants to do this Saturday, and I got the call yesterday, the agenda was set, so I said the best I could do is see if there was a consensus from the board to allow him to do that. I said, you know, usually, they stipulate that you must notify the local fire departments, the sheriff, I think he's been in contact with Sheriff Marty as well. So what are your thoughts on that? Because of the timeline, I didn't, I wasn't able to, the request didn't come in soon enough to get it on the agenda. Thoughts?
Any thoughts? Marty, any concerns?
Concerns, because it'll be a short time, so I have no issue with it.
We just need to make sure we do a follow-up, that he's notified your department and the fire department, and I assume local.
Who usually gets calls, as the sheriff or like 911 or the type of stuff, do they need to know that that's going on, too?
Yeah, I would notify them, too. But they would schedule a time, you know, that you're going to do it for a period of time, it won't be all night or something like that, so.
I think he just said it would be, you know, nothing too big, just a small fireworks display, like right at dusk on Saturday, the 10th.
Have we ever put a, no later than, you know, no later than 11:00 or something like that?
You can sure say that.
I don't know if it makes that much of a difference or not, if they're going to do it at dusk.
Normally, it's a good chance somebody will call it in, you know, so.
Probably not. So we have a consensus that we would allow it, but no later than 11:00 with proper notification to the sheriff's department and all the other people that needed to be notified that it's taking place.
I don't care about 11:00, I just kind of brought it up.
I like it.
Everybody thinks that's reasonable or not reasonable, I guess, but.
I think it's reasonable. Without objection.
Okay, and then... Okay, and then just some upcoming dates. I did hand out the Conservation District agenda for their meeting tomorrow at 8:15. I mentioned the county site tour. The Conservation District tour, that flyer was included with my report as well. Change from other years, just a reminder, that's the 20th of August. It's at 11:45, so we do have a commission meeting that day. So we'll try to keep the agenda short and concise so we can wrap up and be at their office. But it's here in town at their office on Sixth Street, kind of in the west end of the movie theater parking lot. And we'll be meeting there at 11:45 and taking off by about noon or so on that tour. So that's the 20th. You have the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting is the 21st, Wednesday, the 21st, at noon at Clear Lake. And I have four of you that have said that you were, that I've RSVP'd for you, that you were going to attend that. Labor Day is just around the corner, September 2nd. And then the convention, as I had mentioned before, is coming up September 15th, 16th, 17th out in Pier. That's all I have.
Thank you. Item 11A is an executive session for South Dakota Federal Law 125-2-4 for contract negotiations. There are motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Most made in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move into executive session when we come out. We do have a work session, so everybody knows that. Let's take just a five-minute break. And please be prompt in five minutes back in the executive session.